Monday of August seventeenth, two thousand twenty, regular voting made for the Franklin Regional School Board to order. All right, I'm gonna call it Monday of August seventeenth, two thousand twenty, regular voting made for Franklin Regional School Board. Monday, order seventeen, two thousand twenty, regular voting made for Franklin Regional School Board.
Are we monitoring YouTube instead of Zoom?
Okay, we're gonna call it order Franklin Regional School Board Directors Meeting for Monday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty. We have some time for the salute to flag. Thank you. Reading an admission statement, we, the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, achievement and citizenship in all we do. Roll call Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Nevin?
Here.
Mr. Scheiner?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Mitterator?
Here.
Mrs. Woolie?
Here.
Mr. Yant? I believe he's absent this evening. Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Yingling?
Here.
Okay, we had, we did not have an executive session between board meetings this time. Dr. Prano, Superintendent's Report.
Evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start off by thanking our families for returning their registrations in a timely manner. As of Friday, we had over ninety-five percent of our families responding and getting that information into us. I greatly appreciate those efforts and I know our principals and building secretaries are now in the process of gathering the last pieces of information from other families. With that being said, I also want to thank our administrators as well as our district administrators, as well as our principals for their efforts in creating the videos and frequently asked question documents that went out to families. We had a positive response as it pertains to that information as well as we will continue to update the frequently asked questions as things move and as guidance changes and so forth. And a little bit later, I'll get into some changing guidance and I'll keep it brief. But also, and so now that we have the survey results back, our principals and our district administrators are using that data and really in crunch time to make sure that we get everything done from rearranged busing routes to teacher schedules to updated teacher schedules to updated student schedules and assignments. And so I ask people to be patient with us as we work through that process. Usually this is something you do in the month of June and July, and you have two months to do it, and we're in the process of doing this in four days. And so I ask for a little bit of patience or, and that being said, I'm really looking forward to having our staff join us over the next two weeks, beginning next Monday, as we prepare for professional development to help us all get ready to utilize Schoology and other tools that will prepare us to facilitate in a high level in preparation for three modes of learning. So whether a student's in person, whether they're attending through hybrid, in-person, everyday, hybrid, or online, that they're having a high-quality educational experience, one that we would find to be typical of Franklin Regional. Of course, this is new and in terms of what we're doing, but I have full confidence in our staff as well as our administrators, most importantly, our students. That being said, I also want to thank our coaching staff, athletic coaching staffs, as well as the band staff for athletics, for their preseason workouts and for band, for band camp. One of the things that being throughout the campus, almost every day, I get to see our staff members as well as our as well as our students and our musicians, as well as our student athletes, engaging in the practices that we're talking about in terms of mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing. They're pretty adamant about following those protocols and they're very conscientious. And so I want to thank them for their efforts. That being said, we do have some changes. Like we said, it's like, sort of like playing whack-a-mole at times in that every time we think we have something settled and figured out, the Pennsylvania Department of Ed or the Department of Health pops up another mole. And so today, we had another change and as it pertains to wearing masks and the new rule based upon the American Academy of Pediatrics changes, the Department of Health issued a statement that students are now required to wear face coverings at all times in school, even when there are six feet or so, even when six feet of social distancing can't be achieved. There are some exceptions when the students are eating or drinking, when they're spaced six feet apart. And then in regard to the mask breaks, we can still give mask breaks when they're six feet apart, or at least six feet apart, but it can't be any longer than ten minutes in duration. And finally, earlier, late last week, we also received guidelines on how to handle situations when people come up COVID-positive in terms of the situation where, for instance, if we have one person that comes up COVID-positive, like one student or one staff member, we don't have to close the whole school. We have to clean the areas where the case, where the person in question spent time and then people who were in close contact with quarantine. If we have three, if we have two to four persons or five percent, number five, greater than five percent of the total number of students or staff in the school or multiple school buildings, we close the school for three to five days. And if we have five or more, then it's fourteen days. And so when we look at that, we all want our students back in school, but it's going to take all of us. And I think Mr. Mitterator said this best at the last meeting, it's going to take all of us to make sure we're diligent. And as a dad of five kids, I totally get it. We want our lives back. Our kids want their lives back. And there are some activities that we wish we could still engage in. But given the situation, we need to make sure we're maintaining social distancing, following protocols. And so I encourage families and student, our students and our staff to practice those strategies or efforts to minimize the chances of contracting this disease, wearing masks, social distancing up to six feet, six feet or greater, as well as limiting gatherings and exposure. If we all do that, our likelihood of staying in school for longer periods of time increase. And it takes all of us. And so I kindly and respectfully ask for everyone's cooperation as it pertains to that. So that concludes my superintendent report for this evening.
Dr. Prano.
Yes.
Just, this is Mark Kuzlosky, just for a point of clarification for the parents, when you mentioned close the school, were you talking about the particular building, particular school building, or the entire district when you mentioned that?
So, so there are multiple, there are multiple factors in looking at this, and some of it depends upon the level. So if we're in a moderate area. And so it's actually, if we have three to five cases in a school, then it's five to seven days. And so I apologize, and we'll go online. A lot of that depends upon a number of factors. If we have multiple buildings with cases that are not related in terms of family, that could mean closing the district. And so if we have two or more of our buildings that are subject to that, we could end up closing multiple buildings. So it's really the number of cases looking at that from a community standpoint. And so you're looking at things both outbreaks in the school as well as potential community outbreaks.
Can I ask a question as well?
Sure.
So in that case, if that did happen and we had to close a building, all the kids can then attend online like the next day?
Correct. That's, that's, that's the plan right now. And that's why two weeks, for the two weeks of professional development, we're working with our staff to provide them both the training and the time so that they're able to make that transition, should it be necessary, from an in-person environment or a hybrid environment to a full online environment. And so that's really the focus of what we'll be doing over those eight days of professional development.
And one other, one other question, since the list of symptoms is anywhere from a common cold to and the list of symptoms just grows every day. If a child does exhibit a runny nose, which my kids have runny noses from time to time, can they stay at home that day and go online?
That is the current plan.
Okay, so if they're, if they're gonna stay home because they have a runny nose and we just want to be extra precautious, they could attend class online that day?
Right. With Schoology, what they do will be right there. So it won't be any longer picking up the phone and calling in for for assignments when a student's missing. They'll all be right there on Schoology and obviously have to make arrangements with parent, with the teacher so that they know. But if a child is sick, we want them to get the rest that they need. And so, so I also want to be, issue that caution that if a child's really sick, let them get the rest. We'll help them get caught up and make up any work.
And one last question, how often are the kids allowed to have a mask break?
The guidelines do not establish the frequency of mask breaks. So that's something, you know, as we just got this, we'll get, need to get our team together. I mean, we literally got that late, that information late this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. P?
Yes, sir.
That's the mask thing, and I read that when it came through today. One of the things that I noted, one, they confirmed again what a face covering was and included face shields in that homemade face covering, that kind of thing. And so, you know, there was still that broad definition of face covering, or at least so far there is. We'll see tomorrow. But, but the other thing that I noted was there were, there were comments about about kids who were teachers, but people who may not, due to some medical condition, be able to wear a face mask. And we have had that conversation during a board meeting previously, when we talked about HIPAA considerations and being able to take somebody's word for it and that sort of thing. It looks to me that the order, and by the way, because there will be people who will kind of separate this out and say, well, you don't have to follow. It's just guidance. It's just recommendation. This is written as an orders. That word is used repeatedly for this directive. So it's not guidance. It is an order. And part of that order was if somebody claims that they're not able to wear a mask for medical reasons, we have to have written documentation because PDE is requiring us to provide written documentation as backup.
That's the way I read it as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
So back to Mr. Mitterator's comment about let's all do the right thing. And, and, you know, we're all on our honor here to try and, and, and to be able to maintain kids in school and to protect the community and our families. If you have a medical condition that requires you to, prevent you from wearing a mask, we'll honor that with documentation. However, it's not going to be a quick, oh, yeah, my kid can't because, right? That's, that's not an off-the-cuff thing that's going to be acceptable under this order.
I'd like to make a comment if I could, Dr. P.
Sure.
As far as all the families are concerned, please, for the sake of the school district and your fellow classmates, if your children are not feeling well, keep them home. Don't throw the dice and run the risk if they're possibly sick. Let's just use the common sense and keep them home. Hopefully, it's just the sniffles. But if it's something worse than that, you can avert a huge problem for everybody by keeping them at home. The other thing I'd like to do as far as addressing a mask is concerned, my wife actually found something online through Amazon, and I could probably go and grab one so I could show people. Medically, a lot of people have a problem with a mask being pressed close to their face, and they are very difficult to breathe through. She got me a shield, and probably what I will do is I'll blank my screen and I'll go get one. But I think that the shield could really do the right thing for everybody because it's not up against your face. It's not pressing against your nose. You can breathe very well. And it's also covering your eyes. So it's coming from your eyes all the way down to your chin, and I'll go get it so I can show it to everybody online. But I would highly advise folks that if there is a medical condition, and I can truly understand the mask, they're very hard to breathe through, especially when it's warm. But I went from the mask to a shield. It was a world of difference. Not only I had good visibility, I didn't have something poking up into my eyes, but I could breathe much more comfortable. I just wanted to throw that out there for those that the problem may possibly exist with that thing feeling tight around your face. You don't even know the shield's on.
I guess I'd like to also add a quick comment that the school district has worked very hard to develop the use of Schoology, which affords us quite a bit of flexibility, and we're working to try to be able to take advantage of that. Dr. Prano just commented on it that if a person's feeling sick, they could stay home. They fell up to attending class on, online, they could do that. Schoology has everything there. So since this flexibility is built into our program, in my opinion, it takes a lot of the pressure off making decisions. You can make the decisions that are the right decision for the child and/or their family, not on a day-to-day basis, but pretty close to a day-to-day basis, depending on what, what things come down the pike. So we're really working hard to have the flexibility available to our families. And I think that's one of the strengths of this program and should allow us to do social distancing with the least amount of difficulty.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Prano.
I just want to reinforce, Mr. Mitterator spoke about the masks and the shields. If a student can and a staff member can wear the mask, we strongly encourage the mask. It does provide a greater benefit to the student. However, the guidance does say wear a shield or some type of face covering. So that does count in that capacity. So with that being said, we'll obviously promote the use of masks, but if there are issues with a mask, then we could look at the face shield.
Dr. Prano, if I could throw in there while we're talking about quality of mask, you know, what we're trying to do is keep everybody safe. Certainly, our staff, that's important. But, you know, as are more important are the children and their families. And so, you know, I'm not at all a medical professional, but what I'm reading is that some of the solutions, one that I ended up buying two of was this neck gaiter thing because it was more comfortable. And you could just kind of wear it around your neck and then pull it up, and it was there all the time, and it didn't press against my face. And I, of course, after I purchased two of them, then I read an article that said neck gaiters and bandanas are maybe worse than no face covering at all because they aerosolize your breath and, 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 you know, the droplets become even smaller and travel further. And so, you know, I'm back to wearing a, I'm back to wearing a mask instead of a gaiter because it's, it's, it's more important than just comfort to protect myself and to protect others.
Okay.
Dr. Prano, what I'd like to do, not that I want to be the model, but I wanted to just show everybody, for those that can see, this is a very typical mask that most people wear. And you could see kind of, I mean, we've all seen everybody walk around like that, but this is really tight to the face, but it is what it is. This is the shield that my wife found on Amazon. How, where? I really don't know, but as you can see, what it does, it's not up against my face. It's free-fitting. You can see who I am. And this is just for those that may not have known that something like that even exists. I would highly advise for those that may have problems, for whatever that reason may be, trying it because you're also covering your eyes as well if you don't wear glasses.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Prano.
Thank you, Ms. Yingling.
Okay, moving on to approval minutes. I need a motion for the committee, the whole meeting of August third, two thousand twenty, and a special voting meeting for August third, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings. Scheiner?
I'll second Kuzlosky.
Comments?
Comment.
Yes, Mr. English.
I still object to the use of abstract minutes instead of verbatim. It does not accurately reflect the meetings and what's transpired. Therefore, I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call vote, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Scheiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolie?
Yes.
Mr. Yant is absent, sorry. He's in my list. Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, one. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Okay, Dr. Prano, future dates and upcoming topics.
Future dates include August twenty-seventh, a finance committee meeting at four PM. This meeting will be recorded for the public to review. So it will be available after the meeting for, for folks to view the meeting, as well as the day of the meeting. We will accept comments up to noon. September fourteenth, we have a committee, the whole meeting at seven thirty. Again, that will be live streamed here on YouTube. And then September twenty-first, twenty-first, two thousand twenty is a regular voting meeting at seven thirty PM. And my anticipation is that will also be live streamed. As long as we have limitations on, on, on groups larger than twenty-five, we will remain in an online format. So, so you expect that on YouTube and look for information as it pertains to these meetings or the district website. We also push information about these meetings out over our social media platform. Upcoming topics include personnel, gifts, grants and donations, and PSBA officer elections. And that concludes future dates and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Prano. Okay, I need a motion for the Treasury's report for July two thousand twenty. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, move by Mr. Nevin, signed by Mr. Scheiner. Comments? Here and on roll call votes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Scheiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolie?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, list of bills, payment of bills for August two thousand twenty. Pay bills, general fund, two million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars
and five cents. Athletic fund, fifty-six dollars and eight cents. Athletic fund, $56.08. Construction fund, $1,375,576.69. For total paid bills of $4,125,152.82. Unpaid bills, general fund, $787,017.68. Technology fund, $4,250. Capital reserve fund is $14,652. Athletic fund is $9,239.04. Construction fund is $3,169,428.65. For a total unpaid bills of $3,984,587.37. For a grand total of $8,109,740.19. Food service of $6,128.60. For a grand total, including food service, of $8,115,868.79. I need a motion for the payment of bills.
So moved, Nevin.
Move by Mr. Nevin, second by Mr. Shiner. Comments?
Discussion.
Yes. Mr. English.
The list of bills still uses a format that does not provide information on purchases using vague one-word descriptions. A very issue that I raised with the surprise of the dehumidifier purchases that were listed as a vague equipment, despite my presentation on that issue. We cannot be asked to approve bills without full disclosure on the descriptions and the need. Mr. Perry has yet to change the accounting software, so we have that information made available to all the school directors to make that decision. With regards to anything regarding the construction cost, I would be opposing that, so because of the format, which is still being used, I object to the list of bills and will be voting no for those reasons.
Okay, Mr. English, thank you. Roll call vote, vote, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mederator?
Yes.
Mrs. Wollin?
Yes.
Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Okay, we had two public comments. Everybody received them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any comments?
Comments?
Yes, Mr. English.
The public comments from July 9 and August 3 and today's meeting have been redacted. The March 30 resolution foresee on virtual meetings adopted to redact the sender of the public comments email address when the email is attached to the agenda. The redacted comments remove the addresses which are included at regular meetings. This reduction impedes directors from reaching out to the public and their public comments. I've raised this issue at these previous two meetings. I've also sent that request to you, President Yingling, to address this issue. Why hasn't it been corrected? Because this is in violation of the resolution foresee adopted on March 30.
Mr. Madder, you on here?
I am, Mr. President. I would ask him
Am I correct in this to keep the email addresses for the public?
Actually, it was a recommendation from, it was a recommendation from the Department of Open Records.
Thank you.
President Yingling?
Yes.
What we adopted was the redaction of the email address. I don't have a problem with that. However, what is being redacted is not only the email address, but the physical address of the public comments being made. There's no way for directors to reach out to those making public comment if that's being removed. And that's not what was adopted under Resolution 4C. You can redact and remove the email addresses, but certainly that resolution did not call for the redaction of the physical addresses. These are being spoken at a regular meeting. Hi, my name is Jane Doe, or John Doe. I live at 123 Main Street in the Franklin Regional School District. What you removed is not only the email address, but the physical address. We don't even know if these comments are actually coming from someone that lives in the
Mr. Madder?
There is the possibility that somebody could be responding that is not a resident, and we wouldn't be aware of that. We have their names. If anybody would like to check and see that somebody is not a resident, I guess they can then disregard those comments. However, I think the time that it would take the administration to look into it would probably be rather fruitless and an expense of both time and possibly financial expense to do so. And I don't think that by somebody that is not a resident, first, I don't know why they would send it, but even if they did, I don't see how it hurts the district. Again, you can review it. You have the person's name to contact them. And some of those emails may or may not have their physical address, but their email address, if needed, to be redacted from the public. So I'm assuming that if a board member would want to respond to some one of those directly, we could put a process together to make that work. But I don't believe we were in violation of the policy that we've adopted.
Solicitor Madder, what we adopted under 4C was the redaction of the email addresses. That's it.
That's correct.
That is correct. And so what I'm saying is, only within the last three meetings has the physical address been removed. That's not what was included in what we voted and adopted on Resolution 4C.
I
So all I'm saying is
And what I'm telling you is, I don't believe numbers of people do not include their address, their physical address on their emails. So I'm not sure if we are redacting them at the district or if they are not included in that. I would recommend moving, Mr. English, if I can finish. I would recommend moving forward that if we are redacting the addresses, the physical addresses, we stop doing so, but we still redact the email addresses as recommended by the Department of Open Records.
For clarification, for clarification. Again, I don't have an issue with removing one's email address. However, it is a requirement to make public comment that we include our name and address when making public comment. So regardless of whether or not it's being submitted by email, it was included prior to, near the very beginning, when we adopted this resolution. Now, all of a sudden, the addresses
Mr. English, I've got the emails in front of me, and their addresses are not on here. Now, I don't think that Ms. Wolf redacted her address, and I'm not sure that people put them on. It just says
Change the resolution. If we want to change the resolution, we can, but that's not what we adopted.
I mean, if they did not send their address in, I can't help that.
Then the comment does not, then their comment or their submission does not meet the requirements of supplying their physical address when making a public comment. This is no different than they're here in person at an in-person meeting.
So, Mr. English, are you saying then, if, or are you requesting that we make it a policy if someone submits a public record through email and does not write their their physical address on that email, that we disregard it?
Solicitor Madder? The policy is already in place that
I'm asking you if that is the, if that is the request that you're making.
I'm just saying, follow the guidelines that we've already established, and that guideline says that you must include a physical address. Your email address is how you may have submitted it.
Okay, Mr. English, again, I'm only asking a question then, where I can give a valid opinion. Are you then asking that the board disregard and do not include, moving forward, any emails that are received that do not have public physical addresses?
Mr. Madder, we've already done, Mr. English is right. It's Greg Nevin. In our, in our agenda, if I might, under letter F, public comment, public comments will be accepted by email prior to Monday, August 17, 2020, at noon at D. Wolf at FRSH. This is Ms. Wolf's email address. Comments must include the sender's name and home address. And the 500 words or less, all written, public comments will be made part of the agenda. However, the district will redact the sender's personal email address from the public agenda and minutes. Mr. English is absolutely right. We, it is not a public comment unless they've provided their their mailing address so that we know that they reside in the district. And what this statement says we will do is redact their email address, but it doesn't say that we will redact their street address. They are required to give their street address when we're live and they come up to the podium. Mr. English is absolutely right.
I agree with you, but you're not listening to my, what I'm asking for direction from the board. I am asking if they do not comply and put their address in, do you want those emails to be disregarded? That is my question, because right now, if they come in even without a physical address, the board secretary is providing them to the board. Are you saying that you do not want those provided any longer?
You want my, again, I will give you clarification. I didn't write the policy. The policy was clear. So to the secretary, she has an opportunity to respond by email with a click of the mouse, reply all or reply and say
We lost you, Mr. English.
I think, I think just, I think what Mr. English is saying, though, we should, we have the opportunity to reach out and just say, please provide your address and some policy to show that you are a part of the district. That would comply with the policy, and I think that is a reasonable thing to do because that is the request.
I would agree, Mr. Kozlowski. My question, though, is if they are not in compliance, what does the board now, the board secretary is still providing that? Are you saying if they are not in compliance, she emails them, they don't provide their physical address? Do you want those to be disregarded and not sent to the board? That's the question.
The answer is
Seems to be that he doesn't want those because they're not compliant. That's my question.
I think that's reasonable.
And I think also it gives them an opportunity by having the secretary respond as soon as she receives it, saying it's a requirement that you provide this. If you don't want to provide it, then we'll just not include your comments. They're not forced to provide it unless they want their comments heard, and that's been a policy from day one. The resolution that we adopted was just to keep the email address up, and I can understand that because we all have a dislike for spam email. So that would be another reason that resolution was adopted to redact the email address.
Yes, I would add my opinion that if the email is returned because it doesn't have the physical address and the individual provides the address in a subsequent email, then we would be happy to accept it as a public comment.
Right. Absolutely.
If they don't respond and add their address in, I would not share it at the meeting. I would not include it in the meeting.
It might be hearsay for all we know.
Right. That's a fair statement. I was only asking them to do
I'm only asking for, I was asking for the clarification to make sure the board secretary provided the appropriate information that the board wanted. That's all I was making sure. I'm not saying anything else. I just was trying to clarify what the process will be going forward.
Sure. For me, that is no different than a person refusing to give their address at a at a public meeting in person and refusing to state their address as is required. We would not allow them to make a statement at that point. That's required. People that have spoken several times, we know who they are. They get up, they say their name, and they say their address every time they get up. So it's no different than that.
If they don't have their address on their emails, then we will not put them in the minutes.
I would hope that Secretary Wolf would then follow up stating the requirement, because we don't want to deny anyone public comment as long as they're in compliance with our regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. English. All right, we're moving on. Mr. Madder, do you have a solicitor's report?
I have no report for public session. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Agenda items removed from the consent agenda for separate action by members of the board. I need a consent agenda motion. Anybody removing any consent agenda items?
I will be President Yingling.
Which ones are you removing?
Number one, sections A through H on supplemental positions. Number 13, 15 through 27 and 30.
13? Did you say after 13?
No, number one, sections A through H.
I got that.
13, 15 through 27 and 30.
You know, removing 28 and 29?
No, they're staying in.
All right. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items two through 12, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20?
Ah, incorrect.
You're up. I'm sorry, you were, you pulled those. 15 through 27, I need 28 and 29.
Correct.
Need a motion to those.
I motion to approve items two through 12, 14, 28, and 29.
Second?
A second.
Second by Nevin? You have the comments? Hearing and unroll call vote, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mederator?
Yes.
Mrs. Wollin?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Okay, Mr. English, personnel agenda.
On the supplemental positions, I raised the issue back in March. Director Wollin made a comment about the legislature, the governor making an edict securing payment for coaching positions. It did not protect the taxpayers, which is always my concern. And it is now, the issue has arisen again. And Director Nevin was correct in saying that it would require language adopted by the school union. I guess it'd be collective bargaining to have such a protection. Being that it was not included in this year, I asked to have it pulled. And yet, here we are again with the uncertainty of what COVID-19 may do to the coaching this year. I just thought it was a fair protection to the tax I just thought it was a fair protection to the taxpayers to prorate it, but obviously this would have to be adopted, uh, by the, uh, the school, school teachers. And due to that, I, since the language is not there, I cannot vote, uh, for that aspect of, of the first section of the agenda, including A through double H, but would approve the rest of the personnel agenda.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on personnel?
If I may, um, just for clarity, because if, um, and truly Director English has not, um, gone through an entire cycle, um, of, you know, voting on some of these items. Just to be clear, for item two, A through double H, these are positions that are strictly paid on an as-needed basis. So if they do not work a game, they do not get paid.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and there are no coaching positions in there? It's only like the ticket takers, security?
That is correct.
If that being the case, then I would just strike, uh, that aspect and just approve the personnel agenda.
Thank you.
Can, can we, Herb, this is Scott. Can we talk a little bit about the support personnel with the uh, custodians and the health room assistants? These, some, some of these positions, it's my understanding, are related to pandemic, is that?
That is correct. Um, so one of the items on here is to move the four health room assistant positions. Um, they are initially part-time positions within our fresh collective bargaining agreement. However, based on needs, um, at our buildings with the demands of our health and safety plan, we are recommending that these positions temporarily move from part-time to full-time.
And that's, go ahead, sorry.
Well, no, I was just going to say, so that is one recommendation that would be very significant in providing appropriate, um, health service, um, to our, to our kids.
And this is only for the first semester that we're approving this? I'm looking at this as
Correct.
What happens if the situation changes?
So, um, this is only for the first semester. If we should need additional support the following semester, we may renew it at that time.
Okay, and are we able to use some COVID grant funds for any of these positions or are they, um, coming out of the general fund?
I know that Mr. Perry would be able to better respond to this, but for the most part, a number of these positions would be coming from the general fund.
Sure, I'll jump in and offer that we do still have some available funds under our ESAR uh, grant that we could allocate towards offsetting a portion of these costs. Uh, the ESAR grant is the grant that had the longer period of use. We can spend those funds, uh, through this fiscal year and into the next. And there was no application deadline for that particular grant, so we're still, as we're finalizing our plans, um, also finalizing how to best use those grant funds, and this would be an allowable use under that grant.
Does that go along with the custodians as well? I believe those are another one.
That would also be eligible use.
Okay, is there anything else on this list that is related to COVID? Supporting the kids, supporting the teachers?
We do have the additional two greeter positions, which would be assisting in screening individuals as well.
Okay.
Particularly visitors.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any other questions? Need a motion to approve number one personnel.
So move Scheiner.
Move Scheiner, second and evident. Roll call vote, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yeah.
Mr. Scheiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolie?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Okay, Mr. English, uh, what was it, weight room equipment?
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I'm simply voting no. I think that, uh, the amount of money that we've spent for the new school, uh, the extra costs that we're incurring because of COVID-19, it's not prudent at this time to spend money on the weight equipment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on weight equipment?
Sure, Greg Nevin. Reading from the agenda, this weight room equipment will replace older free weight equipment with power racks. This is safer and can handle more kids. This will be used by both athletics and PE. It was included as part of the capital plan presented in February.
Okay, that's correct.
And it's six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars to put safer equipment in the weight room for our athletes and for, um, PE.
Okay, any other questions on weight room equipment? Ms. Wolf, roll call vote.
I need a motion and a second.
I want, I thought we had that. I need a motion. Move by Nevin. I need a second.
Second.
Mark seconds. Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
An enthusiastic and sensible yes.
Mr. Scheiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolie?
Yes.
Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Motion carries seven-one. Okay, Mr. English, number
Fifteen through twenty-seven.
Fifteen through twenty-seven, you're up. I need, yes, fifteen through twenty-seven. Go ahead.
I was elected to office on the principle of opposing the Sloan project, and all these items deal with, uh, the Sloan and intermediate school. Uh, I don't support it. Uh, the reason why I was put into office and therefore the wishes of the constituents, I'm voting no on these agenda items.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I do have another comment, uh, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Yant expressed some concern in an email today uh, regarding errors of, uh, omission or errors and omissions. And we talked about these at the, uh, previous COW meeting. And those items, uh, as I understood it at that meeting, fell into the category that we could, uh, challenge, uh, the architect engineer uh, and try to recover some of those costs at a later date. Uh, I'm not familiar with that process. Uh, it might go to Mr. Yant's comment if we had a little bit more or a little bit better understanding of the process that would be dealt with for the items that were labeled as errors or omissions. I don't know if Mr. Maddock can help us with that.
Okay, Mr. Scheiner, in discussions with your construction manager, normally the construction manager handles that on the initial basis until it, uh, um, until it becomes more of a litigation type issue. But originally, the first part of that is that the, uh, construction manager puts the architect on notice that these items are, uh, looked at, that they were errors by the, uh, architectural firm once the construction is over, um, because they're all small in nature. Um, together cumulatively, they are a larger number, but some of them are, you know, a thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars, maybe two thousand dollars. So we wait till they accumulate. And then there's a discussion at the end, which then I would get involved and, uh, try to, uh, come to some resolution of that issue. Um, that's how the construction manager indicated at the beginning that they would handle on this project, and that is an appropriate way to do so.
My understand, we have not made any changes personally as a school district. These were errors and admissions from the engineer and the arch, the architect, from what I understand. So we should not, that's why it's going under errors and admissions.
Solicitor matter.
There, there is still times that items were omissions that may have not been or unforeseen conditions that still would be the responsibility of the owner, in this case, the school district. Um, each one of the ones that I've had a concern on, I have indicated to the construction manager, some of them they already had, um, put the architect on notice. But the, the items that are a problem that, that we believe are because of an error that the architectural firm made, then we will, uh, sit down with them afterwards and, uh, go through those all and, um, hopefully come to some resolution, uh, without having to, uh, spend any type of, of financial resources on litigation.
But I guess litigation remains a possibility. I, I don't personally favor that if we could get the settlement.
I agree. I would hope that we could come to some resolution that is fair to the district and, uh, that the board could approve.
I agree.
Solicitor matter.
Yes, Mr. English.
And, uh, construction contracts, is there any type of, uh, fund uh, that the, um, architect puts out to guarantee in case it has to go to litigation?
Uh, not in the, not in the, this type of construction, no.
So in essence.
We would, we would put there, we would put his, uh, insurance, his, uh, errors and omissions, so to speak, his malpractice insurance on notice.
So it's basically, Kurt's policy is that reserve fund, uh, in case it has to go to litigation?
That would be, that would be correct.
So then, uh, writing.
Possibly even, even without going to litigation, it, that, that's potentially, um, who would pay? That would be his insurance unless he decided not to put it through, um, an insurance policy and just wanted to pay it out of pocket. That would be the architect's choice.
Well, I guess, yeah, my concern is, is if there is, uh, no reserve fund, uh, then we're really dependent on, uh, taking them to court and hopefully that the insurance from the architect would pay it. Uh, I think it would, whoever wrote the, uh, the contract, there should have been some reserve fund where when these, uh, errors, uh, occur, it's a pay-as-you-go rather than hoping that later we can, uh, uh, recoup, uh, those losses or extra expenses. And as the clock continues to tick, anything that may be out of us, I don't know if we would recoup uh, the interest cost over time.
Uh, Mr. English, what you're asking for is not part of the standard, uh, AIA contracts, and I've never seen, uh, the clause, uh, that you've asked for, uh, in a school construction project.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Madder, Mr. English. Any other comments?
Mr. President, I just want to make sure that when we go ahead and approve a lot of this stuff, we've heard a lot of dialogue on the change order process. We just have to make sure that we make it very clear, not, not playing on the words, whether it's error, omission. We make, need to make it very clear that if there's a problem, that this is something that Mr. Mata would be able to look at and sit down and hopefully avoid litigation, which of course is wasting more time and money. But we just need to make sure that the, so far, these change orders in a project of this magnitude, quite honestly, are not that big. I mean, they're big because they're still money, but I've been involved in my career with many large jobs, and the change orders that have happened here are not gigantic, thankfully, by the way. But we just need to be very clear and concise in noting this, so that when we approve these things to be paid, at some point, Mr. Mata can go back through and know, like we discussed prior, what needs to be discussed as to not being paid. And, and furthermore, we need to make sure that when the change orders come through, that we get an advanced notice of something that needs to be done, which for the most part, Mr. Heck has been doing a very good job of. But we don't need any, we don't need to have any quickie things coming through where, oh, well, this has already worked, it was performed and done, and then ask the board to go ahead and just pay the bill. We have to really refrain from any of that stuff. There's no excuse. Uh, I think everybody that's on this board has been doing an admirable job of when these, uh, are coming to our attention. You're getting relatively, I would think, some really quick response because I think Dr. Pete made this comment a while ago. We can't hold up people when they need to move, they gotta move on it quick. And I think this board has done a really good job of reacting with the comment, yes or no. Remember, it's five yeses or five noes. And if the other four didn't get a chance to it, once you got five one way or another, there's your answer. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that if something needs to be done, and again, Mr. Heck, thank you for the way you've been wording it because you've been pretty good at the detail. Let's just make sure that it gets out to us, not after the fact that, oh, we had to do this job, and you guys need to approve a four thousand dollar spend. That's my call.
And again, Mr. Moderator, that, some of those, uh, functions are first handled by the construction management firm. That's what the district hired them to do. That's part of their responsibility. Um, even though some of the things that you may have mentioned, mentioned Mr. Heck and myself, the construction manager usually does is the first part of that before it comes into either of our, um, realms to handle it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? You're not need a motion to approve fifteen through twenty-seven.
So move.
Move, Mr. Nevin?
Seconded based on my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roll call vote, Ms. Wolf.
Sorry, my mute was still on. Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yeah.
Mr. Scheiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolie?
Yes.
Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes. Motion carries six-two. Okay, twenty-seven, Mr. English.
Mr.
Twenty-seven was included in the vote.
Can I, I thought it was seven-one. Did I miss someone's vote as you said six-two?
I thought Ms.
Mr. Yant's not here.
Right.
Mrs. Woolie.
Mrs. Woolie voted no.
I'm sorry, I thought she said yes, thank you.
I did say yes.
Pardon me?
Okay, I will mark you as a yes.
And those items were fifteen through twenty-seven.
Okay, got it. I said that. So she voted yes for me.
I, I, Ms. Woolie, there's still some confusion. Was it a yes or a no?
Mrs. Woolie votes yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Devon.
Okay.
Seven-one. Okay. So now we're on to
Thirty.
Thirty, correct. Stand, stand, station lines, go ahead, Mr. English.
For the same reasons, fifteen through twenty-seven, I'd be voting no for those reasons.
Okay, any other comments? I need a motion to approve number thirty.
So move.
Second, Kuzlosky.
Second, Mark. Thank you. Ms. Woolie or Ms. Wolf, roll call vote.
Who was the motion, I'm sorry?
Mr. Scheiner made the motion.
Thank you.
And Mark seconded.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolley?
Yes.
Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one. Okay. New business, video conference software, Mr. Shrek and Gosh, thirty-one-nine.
Uh, good evening. I have, uh, two items on the agenda. The first one is video conferencing software. Um, as you are aware, during the, uh, the distance learning that we did, um, beginning in March, uh, we were using the Google line of products, Google Meets. Um, Google Meets was given to the district, to all school districts for free, um, till the end of September, until September thirtieth. On September thirtieth, that subscription expires. Uh, we no longer have access to a video conferencing soft, software that would be robust enough for the district to continue to use with, uh, the, the students in distance learning. I'm currently working with the administrative team, looking at different software packages, um, or a combination of, of two different softwares that would meet the needs of all of our students and teachers in the district. Um, we're currently, um, on the budget item. Um, it should be paid for by the CARES Act and not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Any comments on Mr. Shrek and Gosh's software?
Well, the software that selected, be integrated into Schoology, or is it going to be a separate tool that the kids will have to go to?
That's what we're currently, we're currently working with Schoology on, uh, definitely one tool that we're very interested in. We're not quite sure how that's going to work yet, but we hope that it will be a fully integrated solution.
Any other questions? You're not need a motion to approve the software for Mr. Shrek and Gosh.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Nevin.
Second Shiner.
Second, Mr. Shiner. Ms. Wolf's roll call vote.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolley?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zeros. Title nine, complex toolkit, Ms. Lang.
Greetings. The federal government, um, mandated an update to the Title IX um, law, and so what you have in front of you is a toolkit that allows us to post our training information as well as any supplemental information that we need to provide to the public. This is posted now on a website, on our website, labeled Title IX, and it identifies me as the Title IX coordinator.
Any questions on Title IX toolkit? You want to go straight to, uh, Title IX policy review, Ms. Lang, or do them both at the same time?
Did you want to do a, a roll call vote, or should I just?
Just go ahead and we'll do a roll call vote on both of them when you're done.
Okay, okay. Um, the next item is related to policy review. And this is for a first and second read, because Title IX went into effect on the fourteenth of August. Policy one oh-three, discrimination, Title IX, sexual harassment affecting students. Policy one oh-four, this, uh, Title IX, sexual harassment affecting staff. Policy two forty-nine, cyberbullying, bullying. Policy two fifty-two, dating violence. Policies three seventeen-one, educator misconduct. Policy eight twenty-four, maintaining professional adult-student boundaries. Again, these are all, um, they all reference Title IX, and we do have to update all of our investigation procedures related to that regulation.
Any questions on Title IX? Review policy. Hearing now a new motion for number two and number three for Title IX.
Motion to approve number two and number three, Title IX.
Moved by Mr. Nevin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitterator. Ms. Wolf, roll call vote.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolley?
Yes.
Mr. Yant? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Flavio, St. Vincent Prevention Project.
Good evening, everyone. Today you have before you an annual agreement with no changes from previous years for St. Vincent prevention projects and the services that they provide in classrooms, in K-two-seven classrooms, as well as, um, two groups that they run in the high school level for students with special needs.
Any comments on the St. Vincent? Hearing not any motion?
So move Shiner.
Mr. Shiner?
Second, Mitterator.
Second by Mr. Mitterator. Ms. Wolf, roll call vote.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Wise, Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolley?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-one, or eight-zero, I'm sorry, eight-zero. Okay.
Seven, it was seven-one.
It was the no.
Who said no?
Mrs. Woolley.
No, she said yes, I think.
I said yes, Debbie Woolley, yes.
She's hard, it's, it sounds like you're saying no, Debbie, that's why you're having.
I voted yes for everything so far this evening.
That's okay, all right. She voted yes.
Okay. It was, thank you.
You're welcome. We're going back to Mr. Shrek and Gosh for software purchase code for high school. Go ahead.
Yes, this is software purchase code HS for the high school programming teacher. Um, with, uh, students that are going to be doing distance learning from home, uh, the software that they're currently using, they're learning to program on, does not work on a Chromebook. This, uh, software is a web-based software that allow them to, uh, practice their coding and do their homework remotely on a Chromebook, district Chromebook. Uh, the cost would be twenty-one hundred dollars per year.
Any questions on the software for Chromebooks, doing homework? You're not need a motion?
I'm just sorry, is this, this is just for the one year, this contract? It's three years. Three years, okay. Twenty-one hundred per year. Per year, okay, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion and a second. Need a motion.
So move Devon.
Mr. Nevin?
Second, Debbie Woolley.
Second, Woolley. Thank you. Ms. Wolf, roll call vote.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Nevin?
Yes.
Mr. Shiner?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mrs. Woolley?
Yes.
Mr. Yant is not here, I'm sorry, Mr. English? Mr. English? Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. I need a motion, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move Shiner.
Anybody want to second it?
Yep.
Second, Nevin. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Everybody have a good night. See you in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Bear.
Brad, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening.
You too. How are your kids?